Welcome. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 12th, 2021 Planning Commission hearing. My name is David Weiner, act as the Chair. And before we start off, we've asked Commissioner Costin to do the prayer and Commissioner Graham to lead us up in the pledge. Please stand.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this glorious day which you have made. God, we thank you for the brand-new mercies that we see. Now, Father, we ask that as we come to deliberate and discuss the business of this city, God, that you would grant us of your wisdom and your insight as we ponder the decisions that will affect this city for years to come. Bless us, oh God. Lead us and direct us as we discuss these issues. We give you praise, and we give you honor, and we give you glory, and we thank you in your name and for your sake. Amen.
Amen.
To the fire of the United States of America.
Thank you.
Next, I'd ask Commissioner Klein to introduce the members, please.
We have John Costin, retired Virginia Beach Fire Captain and Member-at-Large; Dave Redman, a commercial real estate broker from the Bayside District; Vice Chair Jack Wall, civil engineer from the Rose Hall District; Chairman David Weiner, commercial salesman from Kempsville District; Dee Oliver, Funeral Director and Member-at-Large; myself, Robin Klein, social worker from the Centerville District; George Alcaraz, building contractor from Beach District; and Whitney Graham, real estate developer from the Lynnhaven District.
Thank you. The next order of business is the explanation of the rules and how the meeting will be conducted. Madam Clerk, could you do that, please?
Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. In order to limit the number of people in Suite 5 at any one time, in-person speakers will remain in Suite 4, where they will be able to view the meeting on monitors until called. For ordinances and resolutions, we will recognize in-person speakers first, calling the first speaker and up to three additional speakers to avoid any unnecessary delay between speakers. Each person whose name is called may enter Suite 5 and must remain socially distanced until it is their turn to speak. Each speaker must exit Suite 5 after providing their comments and may return to Suite 4 to finish the viewing. After all in-person speakers have been called, we will then recognize the speakers participating via WebEx. We will recognize the applicant or their representative first, whether they are in-person or participating via WebEx. All other speakers will be recognized as previously stated. Speakers participating via WebEx, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing and reverberation. It is important that, once recognized, please wait two to three seconds to begin to ensure the Commission hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. Also, do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feed is open at a time to minimize the echo and reverberation, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. Again, speakers will be recognized in the order which they registered. Please note, if the speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, I will move on to the next registered speaker. Commissioners, are there any questions about the process for speakers? Moving on to the public hearing rules. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the Commission with respect and civility. The Commission requests that if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The Chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is a consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The Commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners' association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we go any farther, we need to back up just a minute, because without these people sitting over here, we wouldn't be able to do what we do up here. So I'd like to introduce Bobby Tahan, who's our Planning Director. Bobby, would you introduce your staff, please, that you have here today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sitting beside me have Carolyn Smith, the Planning Administrator. Starting with the next row, we have Marshall Coleman, who was recently promoted to the Planner III position that Wadaw had vacated to become our Planning Evaluation Coordinator. So congratulations, Marshall. We have Wadaw, our Planning Evaluation Coordinator; Hank Morrison, one of our planners in the Zoning Division; Ashby Moss, Planning Evaluation Coordinator as well. I think we also have Summer Peebles; Kevin Kemp, our Zoning Administrator; as well as we have representation from our City Attorney's Office, Kay Wilson, Deputy City Attorney; and Tori Eisenberg.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay. Next order of business is items to be withdrawn. Does anybody have any items to be withdrawn? Please come forward. None? The Chair has been told that Items Number 16 and Number 19 are being withdrawn from the agenda today. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion...
Turn your mic on.
I make a motion to withdraw Agenda Items Number 16 and 19.
Have a second?
A second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Wall and a second by Mr. Graham.
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of eight in favor and zero against, Agenda Items Number 16 and 19 have been withdrawn.
Thank you. Next, the deferred items. Does anybody have an item to be deferred? Please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Commission, for the record, my name is Rob Beeman. I am the Attorney for the applicant on Number 3, and we'd like to request a 30-day deferral to continue to work with the adjacent property owners on that application.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Item Number 6, Beach Development. That's a 30-day deferral because the proffers had to be modified after we met with the Shore Drive Advisory Commission. And then, while I'm up here, 11 and 12 also 30-day deferral because we had to revise the proffers based on some 11th-hour requests, and also meeting with the Town Center, what is it, the Review Committee, which that's all, everything's taking place, everything's done, staff has all the revised proffers, so we'll see you next month.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. The Chair is also aware of Items 13 and 14 being deferred. Being said, Items 3, 6, 11, 12, 13, and 14 are being deferred for 30 days. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to defer Agenda Items Number 3, 6, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Wall and a second by Mrs. Klein, but we have one, hold on, we have Mr. Redmond?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I am abstaining from voting on the deferral of Agenda Item Number 3. The broker for the owner is a colleague of mine, and he and I sometimes partner on various work projects.
Thank you. I am actually abstaining on Item Number 6 pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act. I make the following declaration. I am executing this within the disclosure regarding the Planning Commission's decision to vote on Item Number 6, Beach Building Group, 2332 and 2328 Pleasure House Road, Virginia Beach, Virginia. The applicant is a client of mine, and I'm appointed by Chelton Collins, 2305 Granby Street. I have a financial personal interest in this transaction, therefore I abstain from voting on this decision, this matter, on the May 12th, 2021 Planning Commission hearing, deferral. Phew. Okay. Ready to vote.
All right. Okay. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By a recorded vote of eight in favor and zero against, Agenda Items 11, 12, 13, and 14 have been deferred for 30 days. Agenda Item Number 3, by recorded vote of seven in favor, zero against, with one abstention, Agenda Item Number 3 has been deferred for 30 days. Agenda Item Number 6, recorded vote of seven in favor, zero against, and one abstention, Agenda Item Number 6 has been deferred for 30 days.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next order of business is the Consent Agenda, and the Vice Chair, Wall, will take over...
Mr. Wall, we have a speaker now for Agenda Item Number 7, so it needs to come off a consent.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Hold on. Hold on a second.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. All right. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are applications that are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. We have four items on the consent agenda today. The first item is Agenda Item Number 1 by, which is going to be presented by city staff.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Kemp. I'm the Zoning Administrator here in Virginia Beach. Item 1 is an ordinance amendment which modifies the zoning ordinance in regards to the sign regulations, particularly making them content-neutral and in line with some current court decisions that have been made. What this ordinance does is first changes the regulations for billboards. Our current ordinance regulates billboards based on their content, and what I mean by content is a billboard is an off-site sign advertising something not on that site. Well, to know if you're advertising something on the site or off the site, you have to read the billboard, therefore making it content-based. So what this ordinance does is it makes all outdoor advertising signs, takes billboards out, and any sign is permitted on the site as a freestanding sign, but that sign is held to the dimensional standards of what is normally allowed in that zoning district for freestanding signs. So billboards are not their own use. The second thing that this ordinance does is it removes the zoning administrator's ability to modify non-conforming signs, where in the past, if an applicant wished to take a non-conforming sign and alter it to make it better, there was an administrative process through my office that that could be done. This now puts that process only by City Council approval. The last thing in the ordinance is in regards to electronic signs, and these would only be permitted in two instances. The first are for major entertainment venues. These are venues such as the aquarium that require City Council approval, and therefore City Council would dictate the number of electronic signs and the size. And the second instance is for fuel prices, and these would be allowed only on properties that dispense fuel, and they would be limited to one sign. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commission.
Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? The next item on the consent agenda is Item Number, Agenda Item Number 4. Is there a representative for this item? Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Commission, for the record, my name is Rob Beeman. I'm a local land use attorney at the Troutman Pepper Law Firm, here today on behalf of the applicant for Agenda Item Number 4. We've had a chance to read the conditions. They're acceptable, and we appreciate being on the consent agenda. Thank you. Is there any opposition for this item to be placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we've asked Ms. Klein to read this into the record.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a mini warehouse in order to construct a 25,000-square-foot indoor self-storage facility on this B4 mixed-district-zoned parcel. A portion of the property contains a parking lot and undeveloped area. The proposed building will be a climate-controlled, three-story mini warehouse building with a total height of 43 feet, and matches the surrounding area. The applicant is seeking a deviation to the required 35-foot front yards setback, which staff approves. Based on the considerations, staff recommends approval of the application subject to the conditions, and the Planning Commission concurs.
Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is Item Number 9. Is there a representative for this item? Okay. Seeing none. Is there any opposition for this item to be on the consent agenda? Hearing none. We've asked Mr. Redmond to read this into the record.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Wall. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home at 1105 Voss Court. The applicant is requesting the CUP for a daycare facility of up to 12 children within this single-family dwelling. It's a 7,500-square-foot parcel. It seems to be very well organized and laid out for this particular use. The applicant has 22 years of experience caring for children. Staff sees no reason why it should be denied. The Planning Commission sees no reason why it should be denied, and we therefore place it on consent. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is Item Number 10. Is there a representative for this item? Okay.
Mr. Wall, there is. She had signed, Diana Berman, had signed up virtually, but she is not online, so is Diana Berman here?
Is there any opposition for this to be on the consent agenda? Yep. Hearing none. We've asked Mr. Graham to read this into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a family daycare home to care for up to 12 children within a single-family dwelling. The 5,401-square-foot parcel is zone PD-H1 Planned Unit Development and is located in the Magic Hollow neighborhood at 998 Bowton Way in the Rose Hall District. This request for a conditional use permit, in staff's opinion, is consistent with the policies and goals set forth in the comprehensive plan for the suburban area. Staff finds the property to be well-organized and well-kept, successfully promoting the policies intended to ensure the maintenance and sustainability of great neighborhoods. For these reasons, staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission agrees with this recommendation. Therefore, we have placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. So that ends the regular consent agenda. The Planning Commission also places the following applications for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on the consent agenda, as they meet the applicable requirements for Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance. Staff and the Planning Commission supports the applications, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition, and that includes Agenda Items Number 15, 17, and 20. That was the last, those were the last items on the consent agenda. I move for approval of Agenda Items 1, 4, 9, 10, 15, 17, and 20.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Wall, a second by Mrs. Klein?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Oh, that's right. Go ahead, David.
Number 1, I am abstaining on Agenda Item Number 8, Agenda Item Number, for the same reason as before. There's a work colleague of mine who is a member of the partnership that owns this property, and so that's just too close for comfort. I also am abstaining on all of the short-term rental applications. I have a letter on file with the City Attorney's Office. I have a client who's in the travel industry, and that, too, is too close for comfort. So I do not vote on short-term rental applications before, or ordinances. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Graham?
Anybody else?
You have a letter on file saying that you will abstain from all short-term rental applications. Has that changed?
Yes, ma'am. That has been withdrawn.
Okay. And you will now vote on those applications?
That is correct. I do not have a conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of eight in favor and zero against, Agenda Items 1, 4, 9, and 10 have been approved. Agenda Items 15, 17, and 20, by recorded vote of seven in favor, zero against, with one abstention, have been approved by consent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you for those who've had items on the consent agenda. They will now be scheduled for City Council, and now we're ready to move on to our regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Our first item is Agenda Item Number 2, Commonwealth Auto Group Incorporated, an application for a conditional use permit, motor vehicle sales and rentals, on property located at 4873 Haygood Road in the Bayside District. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please step to the podium?
Welcome. Please state your names to the record.
Good afternoon. My name's Michael Schulte. I represent the applicant, Commonwealth Auto Group.
Okay. Just fill us in a little bit about what's going to happen there.
Sure. So we're looking to do a conditional use permit for an auto sales establishment. It's established business within the city since 2014. Currently, they're located on Shore Drive, and they're being forced to move due to a redevelopment of their site. So they lost their lease, and they'd like to stay within the city limits.
Questions? Any more questions, Mr. Redmond?
Yes. Mr. Schulte, I'm uncomfortable with the, with this application, and the reason I'm uncomfortable with it, we had a discussion this morning, I don't know if any of you were here, if you were, I apologize for belating, I mean, belaboring the points. I have a couple concerns about this application, and I'm not sure, very frankly, that we should go forward today. So that's what we're here for. My concerns are as follows. It's a much larger site than the adjacent site to it, which is also an auto sales dealership. And I know where your current site, too, is, gentlemen. I mean, you know, we considered that application, what, two, three months ago? In any event, it's a larger site, and I'm concerned that there might be, that might be too much concentration of this one use on Haygood Road. There's not a dealership adjacent to it. There's not a dealership on the other side of Aragona. There's an auto repair facility across the street, and I don't know that I've seen enough in this application to convince me, and all of those sites, by the way, except for the one immediately adjacent, the recent redevelopment in this area have all been improvements to the site. So 7-Eleven across the street was an improvement to that site. The Trucks R Us was an improvement to the former 7-Eleven building. I don't know that this is an improvement in any way to this former service station site. So in granting the, I mean, I understand why it's attractive to you, because it was probably cheap to paint the building, put your sign on there, move a bunch of cars on there, but I don't know that that's really what would benefit Haygood Road. So what I'm looking for is greater comfort, that this is an improvement to this site. This plan is a concept plan. It's a fairly simple concept plan. There is no landscape plan proffered. We have what's called, you know, an example of the signage, or it's not a sign exhibit, it's basically just a logo. So those are my concerns. I don't know that this is going to benefit the community or Haygood Road in any way, and might well take it back.
Yeah, thanks. You know, I was able to catch the video of your comments and concerns, so, you know, yeah. I can appreciate the concern, your district, obviously, you know, kind of looking at the neighbor's property, you probably don't want to do something like that, you know? I get it. You know, kind of just to start with your list, you know, just to speak of Commonwealth, you know, like I said, they've been in business since 2014. Their shop's going to resemble, like you said, the Trucks R Us. Mr. Ramon is actually president of the Used Car Association in Virginia, so he's going to, you know, he holds himself to a high standard. In terms of, you know, what we submitted on the plan, we submitted what was requested. There is a landscape plan which exceeds the requirements by over 5% of covered space. We're not just painting the building and adding, you know, some bushes, and it's not cheap. It's a big investment for working people, you know, to buy this building and invest in their business. So, you know, we met the requirements. Planning Office, you know, said that it exceeded the limits of what trees they're going to be planting. There is a landscape plan, and it, you know, it's in a CAD file, which, you know, is the standard for, you know, engineering and architecture. It might lack graphic design, but it's not, wasn't told by us that that would be required for the meeting. So, you know, it gets down to the nuts and bolts. It tells you what we're going to put, where we're adding curb and gutter in six places. We're going to remove that canopy, which is probably an eyesore for a lot of the neighbors. It's been there for three years with the, you know, fuel station sitting empty. So to your point that there's a lot of dealerships, my business is site selection analysis, so I actually, you know, luckily I caught your concern this morning. I was able to, to pair a document. I don't know if Mrs. Coleman had, were you able to get that on the slide? Did we give that to you, or? I'm sure the city uses Esri, which is kind of like the standard, you know, GIS data, and, you know, they have different algorithms which will tell us money, excuse me, leaving a trade area, and within the one-mile, you know, one-mile ring radius of this property, there's over $30 million leaving the trade for car sales. So, you know, a lot of municipalities use this data to determine their comprehensive plan, so appreciate your concern. I would offer this as like, to ease your concerns that you're oversaturated over there with dealerships with the analysis that they give, with the amount of money leaving. I don't know if we can get that on the screen, or I can bring it to you and share.
I, frankly, unmoved by that. It's, you know, this is the corner of Aragona and Haygood Road. It's, that's my concern. It's not whatever circle you want to draw Esri data from. I, what are you going to do to the building? I don't know what you're going to do to the building. Paint it? Improve the facade?
It's a masonry structure that we're going to, you know, re-adapt, so whatever it needs, whatever the city wants, quite frankly. I mean, removing the canopy is the number-one thing, and then redoing the landscaping, we're utilizing the existing sign, so you have what the sign will look like and the dimensions. You know, they're in the business, graphic business, so...
Dave, can I wait in for a minute?
Well, let me just mention this. I do want to say, I understand staff said, "Thanks, this is enough." That's staff. So our consideration is separate from that. And so it should not be surprising, we might have some other considerations that we would put into it, and some other information that we might like, or something else that we might see that would inform our decision-makings in terms of our recommendations. So, David, I'm happy to yield.
Sure. So, I mean, one of the concerns I have, and it's not a big concern, but it is a concern, and we have another application coming in front of us today, too, also. We don't see what the building is going to look like. Before I can approve something, I want to see what the building's going to look like. I mean, yeah, it's a brick building that has, it's been like that color for years, but, you know, we want to see a little bit more what it's going to look like. If that makes any sense. Because it's kind of hard for us to, I don't want to prove anything that doesn't, that I don't know what's going to, I mean, may have something changed before council, but I just want to see something before.
Well, and further, I mean, what's going to happen to the parking lot? I mean, the pavement is obviously in a state of disrepair, and, I mean, there's other things like that. I kind of, I would like to see this be an improvement to the site, not merely moving 50 cars.
Yeah.
And I'm not really convinced of that yet. I mean, I get to, you know, we don't have a landscape plan. We have that. Staff report says you're going to submit a landscape plan. We often see landscape plans, you know, as part of an application that are more developed than this. And I'm just not comfortable yet that I can call this an improvement to the site. Every other corner here has been improved, except for the one that's right on, immediately adjacent to you on Aragona Boulevard. So that's my concern. I am inclined to, I don't want to, not going to recommend denial at this point. I would be inclined to want to defer this and have some further conversations with it and some other kind of examination to be more comfortable with that for myself. Now, if the commission sees this differently and wants to move forward, it can either recommend approval, or we can recommend denial. I would recommend we talk about it a little more.
Yeah, the issue is with the development of them losing their lease, it puts their business in jeopardy because of, you know, the timing. 7-Eleven's going to be moving into the building. They have to be out by July, so, you know, as members of the community, you know, it puts them at a big disadvantage if this continues to drag on, because they still have to settle on the property.
But we don't define your timing.
Absolutely. I just.
I imagine they've known the date of their lease expiration for quite some time.
It's kind of been there due to the planning and the, you know, challenges.
It's either got an end date, or it's a month-to-month lease. In either event, it's not something that we can control. So, I mean, if we were to move forward today, I would, I would recommend, I would urge that the commission recommend a denial. I would, I would be more comfortable if we continued the discussion for another 30 days to see if I could get more comfortable. I could recommend to my colleagues that they become more comfortable. As it is, I don't see it. I'm uncomfortable with it. Would you all be inclined to?
Yeah.
Want to have a 30-day deferral?
We'd like to vote on it.
Okay.
I've got, sorry, I've got a few things. So what about the pavement? Because it looks like it's, you know, there's, you're taking the canopy down, but then it leaves a concrete.
Yeah, we're going to patch the pavement. It's gravel. You know, they had to get the tanks removed, so it was environmental issues, so, yeah.
The tanks were removed? Have to, the tanks have to come out?
The tanks have been. There's a no further work letter. It's been issued by D-4.
You said the tanks have come out, or they?
Yes, sir.
Okay, they have.
Yeah, yeah, it's all been settled. So it just needs to be paved, which it will be.
So this is, you were all moving from a site that we actually vote, I think we voted on, which is that 7-Eleven.
7-Eleven site.
That's right on Shore Drive.
Yes, sir.
And it was like, because you're on the corner of Green, was it Greenwell and Shore Drive right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because that's a much smaller site than this one, I believe, or?
We're still asking for the same amount of cars.
Did you have a conditional use permit on that, that property, or was it?
It was existing.
It was existing.
Yeah, they took over, they took over the dealership.
Obviously, this is in pretty much a neighborhood setting. Would you agree?
Yes, sir.
I mean, 48 cars, to me, just seems like a lot of cars for a used car lot in a neighborhood setting. And, but that's, it just seems like a lot. It seems like there's, I mean, I know you increased some of the green space a little bit up front, and then you did the landscaping around the dumpster. I feel like there's not enough. I think there needs to be more of a buffer up against the road. And, you know, I'm a little confused. You said you're going to patch the pavement, and then you said you're going to repave. Are you paving or re, or patching? Because that parking lot, go ahead and just tell me.
Yeah, we're going to repave that front part.
The whole parking lot, you're going to mill and repave?
The front part, yes, sir.
Just the front part?
The part where it's crushed, and, yeah.
Because the whole parking lot looks like it's in disrepair to me, and a little bit about this.
As things progress, we would like to pave the whole thing, but, as you can imagine, that's a large investment.
It is a large investment, but I think.
The front portion will be taken care of immediately.
Right. I think what Mr. Redmond's saying is that, you know, when, this is a property that's in disrepair, and to just put a little bit of lipstick on it and say that it's great now, I don't know that it really cuts it for, I think we really want to see more of an improvement than, than just, you know.
If I may address your thing about the parking, we actually meet, we exceed the requirement by five spaces, so we're asking for less than would be allowed.
Right, right. But 48 parking, 48 cars for sale seems like a lot in this area.
Five less than which would be allowed by code.
Right, right.
But we could have asked for 50 more, you know, 53.
I don't know that that would have gone very well, but that's all, is my only comments.
George?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't hearing. Can you hear me? I wasn't hearing the informal, but I kind of agree. I think I need to see more of a plan. I agree with Mr. Graham, Mr. Redmond. So having said that, I probably won't be supporting unless they want to defer it.
Okay.
It's their decision.
Anybody else? Gentlemen, it's up to y'all, deferral, we can take a vote?
We'll defer.
Defer? Okay. Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I move we defer the application for 30 days.
Got a motion, second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mrs. Klein. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is for 30-day deferral. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Edman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of eight in favor and zero against, agenda item number two has been deferred for 30 days.
All right, on to item number five.
Agenda item number five is Ocean Rental Properties LLC, an application for a change in nonconformity on property adjacent to 416 Norfolk Avenue in the Beach District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the applicant, Steve Bichard and Josh Motto, with the Bichard Companies are here with us this afternoon. This is an application, not one that we see that often, but there have been a number of them in the last 10 years or so. This is an application for the modification, extension, and relocation of a nonconforming use under section 105D, as in dog, of our zoning ordinance regarding what we feel is a very desirable redevelopment of a legally nonconforming use on the subject property. We had provided a physical survey with the application. It didn't make its way into the staff report, but if staff could put up the composite map, I want to take a minute to review what's on the property now that's been there since 1948. Is there not a composite map that shows the building footprints? That aerial is not quite good enough for what I want to do. There we go. And hopefully, the physical survey can make its way into the package when it goes to city council. You'll see there are five buildings on the property. Those five buildings house nine units that have existed, the lots are on three lots, I should have said that. The lots have existed since the early 1900s, and the five dwelling buildings with nine units have existed since 1948. The three lots today, under today's zoning, zoning didn't exist when these houses were built. There wasn't any, there wasn't even a subdivision ordinance in the city of Virginia Beach at the time they were built, or Princess Anne County. But the, today, as staff report says, you could build six units on the three lots that comprise the property. The units that are there now straddle the boundaries of the property, which are not allowed under the building code today, another nonconformity with regard to this piece of property. The nine units that are on the property today have been there for over 70 years. There is a grand total of one onsite parking space, one. That parking space is gravel. There are other parking spaces that are partially on the property and partially in the right-of-way, unimproved right-of-way, but nowhere near the 18 spaces that are required for the use that's been there for over 70 years. The setbacks on these buildings, the setbacks for two of the buildings from Baltic Avenue, 2.9 feet and 3.6 feet. Setbacks from Ninth Street, 3.6 feet and 3.7 feet. Setback on the east side, the only side that doesn't have a right-of-way, four feet. And the setback from Norfolk Avenue, closest 0.9, 0.8 feet. All deficient as far as the required setbacks are concerned. Because this property was developed in 1948, there is absolutely, positively, no stormwater management on the site whatsoever, at all. So those are all existing nonconformities with regard to this site. The requirement under our city code for determining whether city council wishes to approve by resolution a modification, enlargement, extension, relocation of a nonconforming use, which nonconforming uses typically, we want them to go away, but many, many circumstances, especially after BRAC, that's not been the case with regard to areas of the oceanfront that weren't fortunate enough to be rezoned to OR. But the qualification or the requirement is that there be a finding that the proposed condition is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing nonconformity. So now I'm going to explain what we've proposed, and I think demonstrate pretty clearly that in every instance, we're exceeding in terms of compliance with the ordinance to everything that is there. The current plan that's before you, if you could, if you all would put that up, please, is proposing to redevelop the site with eight units, one less than has been there for over 70 years. And that complies with our commitments to the Navy with BRAC. And there's no opposition to this from the Navy. We have 16 onsite parking spaces with a drive aisle to serve them all that meet city code, a bit of an improvement over one gravel space. The setbacks, before we were advised last week that we needed to dedicate right-of-way at the intersection of Norfolk Avenue and Baltic Avenue for a higher, or a higher radius turn, lower radius turn, sorry, I'm not an engineer. But before that, the setbacks along east side of the property, adjacent to residential, 10.5 versus the current 4. Along Baltic, the setbacks are 10 and 1/2 feet as well. Norfolk Avenue, because it's staggered, the corners of the proposed dwellings that are closest to the right-of-way are 10, and the corners of each dwelling that's further away is 14. 10 and 14. And along Ninth Street, again, where we've got today 3.6, the setbacks are 10 and 1/2 and 12 and 1/2 feet, respectively, for those units. All of the units as proposed will be built on one property with the re-subdivision plat vacating the property line, so that that building code deficiency will be settled. And the entire redevelopment will be required to meet the current, very, very stringent, most stringent in the Commonwealth of Virginia, site stormwater collection and treatment requirements, and resiliency for a 1 and 1/2-foot sea level rise. Again, all improvements, substantial, not at all minor. Currently, there is no curbing and guttering on any of the three streets that abut this property, not a bit, no sidewalks either. With redevelopment, all three of the street frontages, over 350 linear feet of street frontage, will be curbed and guttered, and widening will take place on some of those streets. A five-foot sidewalk will be provided in the right-of-way by the developer as a part of the redevelopment on both Norfolk Avenue and Baltic as conditioned. All the current utilities above ground electricity will all be buried and relocated. And as I said, stormwater treatment will be, first of all, there's a permeable paver drive aisle proposed, and the parking is where the underground storage will take place, and not an expensive proposition. There will be, my client will be spending $400,000 plus or minus in improvements to the public rights of way and public utilities, as well as stormwater management and resiliency on this property. Forgetting all the rest of the development of the property, redevelopment of the property, that's the amount of money that essentially is for public benefit on this property compared to, again, what is there now. And that's a, that's a large amount of money, to say the least. The other option is just to simply refurbish all of the existing buildings. This application's been pending for 19 months, and it takes a while to get an application ready to come forward. My clients haven't owned the property that long, but they, they have not during that period of time invested a lot of money to refurbish, rehabilitate, in the, in an effort to keep these buildings for another 20 years. That's not what they think is best, and they haven't done so. But that is the other option here. The bottom line to this is this is a tremendously impressive proposed redevelopment. And you need to look but about 75 feet to the east on Norfolk Avenue to see another development that my clients did, a redevelopment of property that was pretty much as bad as this one. And it's not anymore. And folks, this would be just one more step in the right direction, will add to the value of all the other properties in the neighborhood, and encourage other redevelopment that needs to take place in this area. We've provided you with letters of support. I dropped them off at each of your spots this morning from 13 neighboring property owners, residents, in support of this application, 13, as well as a petition, and I think some of the signatures may be duplicative on the petition. So I think that the burden that we have in this instance has been more than adequately addressed. The idea that, that leaving this as is, with, you know, clean it up, you know, make it look a little prettier and all that, versus what is proposed, to me, is not a hard choice. And we've had similar applications, especially up in the Seapines area, that have been approved by city council. There's four of them that I'm aware of, and a number of others as well, of doing the same thing. Because with, with our circumstance with, with BRAC, the oceanfront is the area that we protected, and we want to make sure it gets redeveloped. It's a, it's a big part of our city's future, not the only part, but a big part. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Burdon? Okay, Robin?
Okay. So I think that that was a great presentation that you just made.
So I think that that was a great presentation that you just made. I think everyone agrees that that property needs to be redeveloped. There's zero question. It is quite the eyesore. I find it disconcerting that the owner has been managing the property for 19 months and it looks the way it does. Even, I understand not wanting to invest a lot if he wants to redevelop the property, but the quality of that housing I found disgusting. There was a lady in there who just signed a one-year lease. We took a look at her lease and there's nothing stopping the owner from pushing her out of that property upon redevelopment. And so we, I have concerns about that. And just the fact that the grass doesn't appear to be mowed, like, I, I was not happy with the property.
Well, let me, and I, I completely understand where you're coming from. I will simply say that it's spring and, you know, with the, some of the wet weather, I had to call the people who cut the grass at my house because they need to be cutting it every week now as opposed to what they've been doing every couple of weeks. So that may have something to do with the grass cutting part of it. With respect to the tenant that you spoke to, this, if this is approved by City Council, the simple reality is, is that it will take at a minimum, in my experience with our new stormwater regs, et cetera, a year and a half, could take longer to get site plan approval. That's the unfortunate reality we live in. So the tenant you're speaking, you spoke with, there is not a snowball's chance that they're going to be moved out and they could more than likely extend their lease beyond the year that they're there. It's not going to happen within a year, just isn't possible, unfortunately. But that's the reality with stormwater and resiliency for most of the city.
My preference would, for there to be something in writing, just for the tenant's protection, completely aside from looking at it. I don't think that a nonconforming, the purpose of a nonconforming property is to stay nonconforming. I think that the, the rent that that woman is paying for what she's living in versus if the property is redeveloped would greatly be recovered in six homes versus eight. And so I can't reason, all of my personal feelings aside, keeping the property in nonconforming
Any other questions? No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any speakers? No speakers. Okay, we'll close this and open for discussion. And who wants to go first? BT area, George.
Thank you.
No problem.
I, I went onsite, I actually went onsite and I did run into some of the adjacent property owners. I have seen the petition that was for it. I've seen this applicant's work. I meant to ask Mr. Bradon, you can just nod your head, did this applicant also do the 16th Street Cypress Avenue project? Yes, okay. Kind of looks like that. Is that, well, it looks good, too. But, I mean, he's done some extensive design here. I'm comfortable with it. He's right. Robin, on the site plan, it's pretty extensive to, the timeline is extensive to get that through with the city. It's just the stormwater is, it's been extreme to get things through and approves. And I'm sure he'll get it, he'll get to that point, but I'm liking this. The neighbors like it and, you know, they were all out there, we got petition for it. And that's really all I have to say. I'm going to be supporting unless anyone else has anything to say about it.
Whitney?
I'll be quick. Could we put up the slide of what the property looks like today, the photograph? Back one photo? Okay. So that's what's there today, built 70 years ago. I mean, you hear that it's, it's, you know, what's not, what, it's not conforming, parking, setbacks, stormwater, the number of units. And then show, if you could, the rendering of what it'll, and there was, I think there was another one that was more of a close-up. I mean, gosh, this is what we want. To me, this is, this is a huge improvement and I just, you know, I mean, to hear that, you know, they're going to, you know, they're taking the density down by unit. Each, each unit, I think, is going to have two parking spaces. There's no opposition from the Navy, increased setbacks, stormwater improvements, curb and gutter, sidewalks, utilities getting buried in this final product. And this is a developer that has done other projects that are attractive. It's the revitalization of an area that, that, you know, in certain pockets needs it. So I'll be supporting this.
Okay. Yeah, Robin? I'm sorry.
The nonconformity piece really bothers me. And then better than bad is still bad. And the, if it's going to take 18 months for the new stormwater, like, for all the site plans to be approved and everything, does that mean that those tenants, that woman and anyone else that lives in there, is going to continue to live in dilapidation during that time?
Mrs. Oliver?
So, Whitney, I agree with you. This, this is a great improvement to this property and I believe that anybody that bought this property is, their intent is to improve it. I mean, they're not, obviously, they're not going to refurbish the buildings. We were out there, we walked around them, there's no refurbishing any of those buildings. They're lucky they actually stand on their own today during the storm. But staff has denied this and when staff doesn't very often, in the many years that I've been sitting in the seat, deny an application. And so when they do, you have to look at it for a reason. And they're doing it because this is a nonconforming piece of property that someone wants to develop and keep it in a nonconforming way. We don't do it. They don't let you do business like that, they don't let me do business like that. And granted, he is one less than what he has applied for, which is great, but I think that he can build a great, I think he can redevelop the building, the property and, to what, what code is. And, and not leave it in a nonconforming state. I mean, it states, it states right here in it. Section 105 of the Zorden, Zorn, zoning ordinance does not permit removal of an existing nonconforming structure in order to redevelop the site with a new nonconforming structure. He'll have to figure it out. I, I can't, look at Eddie, he's all, he's all round and out of shape, but I.
Can I approach?
I mean, you can't, that's up to the chair, that's not up to me.
Well, the only reason I'd like, go ahead, go, you finish.
But I just, I'm, you know, I'm not saying that it's not a great, you know, plan. It is, obviously. But staff wants to keep it like that and I have to agree with them and that's where I am.
I, I'd like to have Eddie come up because we didn't have any speakers, a little rebuttal because I'm torn and I don't know which way to go and I want to hear, I'd like to hear.
I want to, I want to make, I'm not, I'm not here to, to argue with anything other than your quote of something in that staff report. And I didn't get on it to start with, but that statement is utterly false or is a absolutely new, pulled out of thin air statement. We have, and this ordinance that I read you, the same, the ordinance itself, City Council has the absolute ability to agree and has, on many, many applications, to allow modifications of nonconforming uses that change, that tear everything down and build something new. And that insinuation that I heard about last Thursday for the first time, never seen that put in a report ever before. Okay? That's reality. This, this idea that you can't do this, if that were the case, why are we on the agenda if we can't do this? And why have we approved other ones? Why have we approved lots and lots of other ones over the years at the North End, Seapines and elsewhere? So the insinuation that this is something that shouldn't be done or can't be done, the reality is nonconforming uses, you do want to try to get rid of them, but this provision is very clear. And when we, when we did BRAC and we said, "We're going to protect units at the oceanfront" and we have a lot of nonconforming stuff at the oceanfront that wasn't covered by the OR district where we were able to pull those in and say, "We're going to keep these, this density, we're going to build increased density even though BRAC's there." These areas were left out of that and that's why we use a nonconforming use modification provisions and have done so very successfully over the years. I can't help the fact that apparently that historical perspective has been lost. So I just want to make that very clear. That statement in here has never been in a report before and it doesn't say that in the ordinance. You can't find those words in the ordinance. That's not directed at you, but it's that, it's what's in that.
No, you're directing it to me, thank you.
No, but you, you read, you read the.
I read what's in front of me.
Right. And that, and I left that out before because I didn't want to get confrontational with what staff put in that report. That's, that statement came out of thin air.
No, it's in print.
As far, as far as what's in the, in the ordinance, it doesn't say that.
I hear you.
And it's quoting something that supposedly the ordinance says.
Yes, sir. I hear you, Mr. Bradon.
Thank you.
No, you did, you, it's fine.
Mr. Tonk, could you?
With that, hold on.
Hold on.
I'm sorry. With that, along with the fact that it also says that the density, you know, staff is talking about their density and that their percentage of the lot cover, coverage exceeds the maximum. By 65%.
Mr. Tonk, could you make a, why, is that, why was that in the staff report or what, can this?
So I'll, I'll read it word for word from the ordinance, Mr. Chair. "No nonconforming structure shall be enlarged, extended, reconstructed, or structurally altered if the effect is to increase the nonconformity." So that is the one piece. Further above it, it does say, "No nonconforming use shall be enlarged or extended to cover greater land area than was occupied by the nonconformity on the effective date of this ordinance. No nonconformity use, nonconforming use shall be moved in whole or in part." So the ordinance does say that. After that, it does say, as it notes in the staff report, section 105D also allows them to go to City Council for approval through this process and that's why we're here. So yes, the ordinance does not allow us, staff, to do that, that is correct.
Eddie, we're good.
So it has been the historical practice that that has been allowed and we're not disagreeing with that, but, so.
We're good, we're good. We're good.
I completely agree and we are, as I've put on the record, in every case, we're making the nonconformities better, we're not making them worse.
Thank you.
And, and 4,400 square feet of our impervious surface, more than the 3,100, is for the onsite parking and the access to the parking.
Okay. Thank you.
To make it conform.
I'm saying, Mr. Redmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I gotta say, I'm going to let City Council settle that, that y'all have going between you about whether they can or whether they can't. I, I don't know that Moses came down from the mountain with an answer on that question, that's for the City Council to decide. I will say this, this is an improvement on this property in every single way. 100 times out of 100, I would take a nonconforming use, make an improvement like this, and it ended up with a nonconforming use, I'd high-five everybody within sight. Everything about this property can and should be improved. And I've yet to find anything that's not an improvement thereon. I mean, sometimes we miss the forest for the trees and, and this is a place, it seems to me, that could desperately use precisely what's being proposed here. And again, this is not a casino. For whatever reason, people tend to treat people living in houses as though it's some kind of nefarious or noxious use of some sort. They're the least impactful and damaging kinds of uses than you can get. It's not a 60,000-foot fitness facility with 5,000 cars a day. It's just a small number of people living in houses. I think this is a, I think this is a fantastic improvement and I am all for fantastic improvements. Again, if there, I would, I would be delighted if there were 100 more instances of this that we could enable. I agree with Mr. Alcaraz, I agree with Mr. Graham, and we ought not fumble the ball when we have opportunities like this to improve our community. So I'll certainly be supporting it and urge my colleagues to do the same. Thanks.
Mr. Wall?
I agree it's an improvement. I applaud the applicant, but I think everything that's been said here can be done by right. I don't think we need to increase the density and, you know, encourage a nonconformity.
Who else? Whitney, do you have something? No?
So, so it's councils, it's councils able at their discretion to, to change it. We're here today to talk about land use. That's, that's our recommendation. From a land use perspective, to take something that's completely nonconforming and make it less nonconforming, it still will be nonconforming, but not as nonconforming and it's, it is, like Mr. Redmond said, it's 100 times better. I mean, I just don't even, I, to me, to, I mean, this, this totally makes sense to, to see this project done. I think it's a big improvement and I think it's a catalyst for other things great to happen. So I'll be supporting it.
Okay. So, Mr. Redmond, I can, I kind of respectfully disagree with you just a little bit. I do like the project, but I'm sorry, but nonconforming and conforming is considered land use and that's what, here, we're here to discuss and we're here to talk about. I, what they're doing, taking a nonconforming and making it still nonconforming, but it's still, it's still very good project and it's going to, I'm going to support it. I'm, but I, but I, we are here for land use and nonconforming and conforming is land use. So we have to keep that in the back of our minds, so we're here to discuss that for future. Yes, sir.
Mr. Alcaraz, would you care to make a motion? If not, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, you can follow me. I'll make a motion that we approve agenda number five.
Second?
Well, I would actually like to amend his motion. I think we have to, we have to alter some of these conditions. Condition number one says when the site is redeveloped, the maximum density shall not exceed six multifamily dwelling units. We would have to change that to eight. And I believe, so I think the applicant has agreed to this radius change at the corner. I don't know how that's affected. Is this correct, Mr. Tonk? You guys had a conversation about this?
The, the radius requirement we covered during the site plan review process when they redeveloped the property, so, or if Mr. Bradon wants to.
I want to make sure we get that right before we leave the room so that.
We submitted last week when we found out about this requirement of revised plan with the radius corrected and dedication involved. And that, that forces the very corner, the northwest corner, to have that one building at the closest point as it comes around at five feet rather than 10. Everything else stays the same, but because that radius gets closer to that corner, that, that setback, which under number two, there are setbacks, all the setbacks are fine except for that one tip of that one corner.
And that would be necessary in order to accommodate your request to tighten that radius. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so then I would make, then I would say that the, I would suggest perhaps that Mr. Alcaraz amend his motion to change number one to shall not exceed eight multifamily dwelling units and number six, in a second sentence, the radius, line radius at the intersection of Baltic Avenue and Ninth Street shall be five feet rather than 10 feet in order to accommodate the staff's concern about that corner. Do you, would you agree to that?
I, I agree with Mr. Redmond. I appreciate the amendment with your second.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Alcaraz and second by Mr. Redmond with the conditions. And Mrs. Wilson wants to weigh in.
No, I just want to mention that, Mr. Graham, you, this is a project that's financed by Town Bank. As such, Mr. Graham has on file. Bank. As such, Mr. Graham has on file a conflicts letter that he will disclose and vote. So, he will at this time disclose and vote. You're good.
Yep. Do it now before we vote.
I have a disclosure form that's on record with the city, that I am on a board at Town Bank, but I do not have any financial interest in this project. And I do plan on voting today.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Nay.
Ms. Oliver?
Nay.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Nay.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By a recorded vote of five in favor, three against, agenda item number five has been recommended for approval with modifications to conditions one and six.
Thank you. Move on to item number seven.
Our next item is agenda item seven, S.H. Campus LLC, an application for a conditional use permit, group home, on property located at 3396 Stone Shore Drive in the Rose Hall District. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative please step to the podium?
Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. I'm Jennifer Soraki, Executive Director of Seton U Shelters in Virginia Beach.
Okay. Just tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
We're very excited to have the opportunity, for the first time in our 38-year history, to bring together our Boys' and Girls' House, our mentoring, and our outreach programs together on one centralized campus. We know that this will enable us to better serve the families in the Virginia Beach community and beyond. And at this point, we've served and saved just a little over 350,000 lives. The majority of our boys and girls do come to us from the city of Virginia Beach, and this opportunity, of course, allows us to serve those families. It also enables us to, as an organization, provide a better workplace for the wonderful people who are committed to the work that we do on behalf of youth in our community. And we also are looking forward, with this piece of property, to be able to do some green space restoration for both educational and aesthetic purposes in Virginia Beach.
Right. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I'm so tall, I need to...
No, that's okay. I don't think you guys were here this morning. Could you please provide a brief overview of the kids, of the population that you serve?
Certainly. So, the children that we serve come from all families and backgrounds. They come to us because they may be having problems with their family relationships, arguing with mom and dad. We are, at this point in our history, almost 38 years, we're a microcosm of the community at large. We're seeing more children who are in homeless situations, many of those short-term homeless, but homeless nonetheless. Unfortunately, again, as a reflection of the community, we are seeing some trafficked children. This is a widespread pervasive problem in Hampton Roads and beyond. And those are the children that we do serve through our Boys' House and Girls' House, and then also our mentoring and our outreach programs. Average length of stay in the shelter situation is typically three weeks. Average age, our kids are aged in our Boys' and Girls' House from nine through 17. If that helps, give a little bit better picture of who we are.
Thank you. Any other questions? Questions?
Yes, sir.
So, you said three weeks? That's the average stay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, it's not very long. It's a...
No, we're considered an emergency setting for a child who needs a safe haven, a place to go. When you talked about the children we serve, also, if I can say, we serve youth who are in need of shelter, and our support services, we're not in any way detention setting or a setting for a child or youth who may have substance abuse issues. Those children need more of a clinical or a more supportive setting in those areas. We're not a therapeutic-type setting. Yes, sir.
So, can you describe the... Like, how it's going to be constructed?
Yes. So, the project, as it's planned out now, is going to be constructed in three phases. Phase one will be our Boys' House. Some folks in the community may have heard about the end of our 38-year lease at our Boys' House due to some priority changes with our landlord and wishes to use that property for their own programming. So, that is our top priority, is to construct our Boys' House, followed by the Girls' House, and finally, phase three will be the administration, community education building.
And which ones, the Boys' Houses?
So, in looking at the layout that we have in front of us on this property, the Boys' House would be that building closest to the southwest corner, followed by the Girls' House, kind of in the center, and then admin on the, kind of the north, the north building at the layout drawing I'm looking at in front of me.
Okay. So, the church building is going to stay until...
The church building, fortunately, we've determined can be used short-term for our boys. We'll have to do some renovations as it is a bit dilapidated.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Costin?
So, are y'all moving from St. Nicholas and St. Aden? Is that where y'all are now?
Yes, sir. For our 38-year history, we've had to shuttle between three buildings for administration and mentoring, and then shelters and outreach. So, we will be leaving a St. Nicholas location first. We do anticipate that it'll be several years, you know, unless a miracle occurs and, you know, a huge donation comes in, probably, as it will be in phases, probably be a couple of years, two, three years for the Girls' House, and then admin.
Applaud the work that you do.
Thank you so much. You know, we are here because of all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graham?
I just have a comment. I grew up on Little Neck Road, right down the street from there. Never knew you guys were there until just recently. Really had, you know, kind of a quiet use. I mean, nobody knows it's there.
And thank you for bringing that up. Because of the nature of what we do and confidentiality reasons, we can't really shout from the rooftops about what we do, but we are very excited about, again, being able to bring together our programs to better serve Virginia Beach and surrounding communities, and as I mentioned earlier, to also have some wonderful green space to both restore and educate the children that we serve.
Yeah. That's great. Dave?
Any other questions? Dave?
No, I just want to... A miracle already came, and that is namely that you all are doing what you do. I was tearing up listening to you describe your mission. I've been familiar with it in the past anyway. You provide just an extraordinary service to some of the most vulnerable people in our community, and not enough do it. The world just doesn't have enough really good people doing these kinds of things, and I genuinely appreciate what you are doing and the fact that you want to expand it and do it in a better way. Can't tell you how good that makes it.
Now, you're making me tear up. Thank you so much for that. As I said, we are quiet. We're one of the more quiet nonprofits, but again, appreciate the chance to be considered, and we are hopeful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have two. The first one being Julie Griffin, to be followed by James Seeger.
I'm in here representing both Seton House as well as the purchaser of the property.
State your name for the record.
Julie Griffin.
Okay. Thank you.
So, obviously, we're in support of it. The owners of Atlantic Bay Mortgage Group, which is a great, you know, local company, I'm sure you guys know, Brian and Stan Holland are the main backers in this project and are in great support and hope that we can also have your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Seeger.
Welcome, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is James Seeger. I happen to be a resident of that area. I feel a disadvantage from what I just heard. However, if you guys would be kind enough to bring up that picture, that church, I'm sure would appreciate it. Thank you. That church sits on the corner of Holland Road and Stone Shore Road. I happen to own a house there. That area is very crowded and very busy and lots of traffic. So, I feel like if you put a home there with these youth, you're going to have a problem with traffic and some of the kids dealing with the traffic down Holland Road. My own child has had plenty of accidents down there. It's just a dangerous area. Second of all, in that area, it's already saturated with youth that, you know, they get together and they do mischievous things. We have green lakes in that area, and we also have Magic Hollow not far away from there. So, now you're talking about bringing in a bunch of other children. And the police in that area and the problems in that area, if you check the police report, you'll find that that's a very problematic area. So, my concern is that if we bring in more, then I spent the last 25 years trying to pay for my house in that area, then the value of that house is going to go. So, that's basically my concern. I hope you guys will take that into consideration.
Okay, sir. Any questions? Thank you. Amy, would you like to come back up for a rebuttal?
I certainly do understand the gentleman's concerns. I do just want to clarify a little bit about how our children stay with us. We have a maximum occupancy in our shelters of 10 boys and 10 girls. Those children are in Virginia Beach City Public Schools during the day through our longstanding relationship with them, are unsupervised at no time. And also, our new location will be completely fenced in for the children's protection. I mean, our children are never outside or in any situation where they're unsupervised by our professional case management and counseling staff. And I certainly do understand and appreciate his concerns, and appreciate the fact that he's thinking about the children's safety. But again, this will be an enclosed area. These children are always supervised. We have never had an incident of any kind in our 38-year history because of our incredible staff and their dedication to the care of these children. I hope that clarifies a little bit. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No more speakers?
No more speakers.
All right. We'll close it and open up for discussion. Chad?
I mean, I really appreciate Mr. Seeger's comments. You know, I think he's probably... He's been there for a long time near to the area, you know, the traffic, the density, the maybe some existing problems out there, you know, with some mischievous youth. And, you know, I certainly appreciate his, you know, insight into, you know, wanting to and maintaining value of the properties, you know, in the area. But I think that, you know, we've heard quite a bit, you know, that, you know, it's very low-key, very, you know, not very dense. The individuals that are there are not there very long, and, you know, we just heard that they're supervised, you know, for the most part, the entire time that they're there. So, I hope that alleviates some of Mr. Seeger's, you know, concerns. And, you know, I'm going to be in support of it.
Okay. Mr. Redmond?
Just real fast, I want to say I'm really impressed by the notion that you want to involve some of this green space that you'll have at your disposal and get these kids outside some and give them some, you know, some education and some interest in some things. You know, the children spend too much time enclosed by four walls. And I think that's going to be a real benefit to them, and I think it's a real credit to this project. So, I can't wait to support it.
Mr. Costin?
I agree with Mr. Redmond. I've had the pleasure of inspecting both of those, the former facilities, and I've never seen or heard any problems there. I don't even think the kids get out to play much, really. I mean, they don't have much time outdoors in the two present locations, and that's a great advantage to where they're moving to. I'd like to tell Mr. Seeger that your family will be really safe here from what I've seen of how they run their business.
Anybody else? Do you have a motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion that we approve agenda item number seven.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Wall and a second by Mrs. Klein for approval.
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Absolutely.
Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
I was going to say an enthusiastic aye.
Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of eight in favor, zero against, agenda item number seven has been recommended for approval.
Thank you. All right. Go to item number eight.
Item number eight is South Lynn Haven LLC, an application for a modification of conditions on property located at 877 South Lynn Haven Road in the Rose Hall District.
Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
Chris Wood. I represent the owner. I'm one of the owners of the property. Thank you all for taking the time. May I proceed?
Yes, sir. Good.
This property is very small. It was, as you know, I think, in closed session that the street was closed in 1984. For some reason, I don't know why, but they left a couple of the easements over top of them. One of the easements is for emergency vehicles, which I've never seen that on a property before, but that was on there. What we would like to do is remove the easements so we can slide the building to the left. We have spoken to the adjacent neighbor. I know she had some concerns about it, and I feel like we've got a pretty good relationship with her. I've known her for a long time. And we will certainly continue to work with her, I don't know if she's here today, to make sure. What we would like to do by closing that easement is slide the building all the way to the south. That will allow us not to have a bunch of setbacks and block her building at all. And it's really about as simple as that. I know there was a concern in closed session about not having an elevation of the building. You know, this is a very small building, probably less than 3,000 feet. You know, I don't think it would be proffered anyway, so I'm not sure if there's any benefit to seeing what the building would look like, but certainly it'll be a high-quality building. We have been discussing with various professional users like doctors and dentists and insurance agents and that type of thing. So, that's really about it. It's pretty simple.
I'll start off on this one because I was pretty much the one that said, and I had no idea who the owner was, but we've never approved anything without seeing elevation. We had one today that we just said that we needed more information. Please go. We deferred it. They're going to go put things together. They're going to show us what the lot's going to look like, you know, the pavement, elevations. I'm just not comfortable approving anything without seeing the elevation. I've been doing it for eight years now, and we've never done that in eight years.
I don't have a problem giving you a sketch. I guess the question would be, we wouldn't want it to be proffered in any way.
Sure.
Would you recommend, would you suggest that would be proffered?
No, no, no. Just, I just want to, we just want to see what's going to go there. I mean, I don't... Granted, it's going to go to city council, and they're going to make the final decision, but we don't really... I don't feel comfortable sending this to city council to say, "Yes, we're going to do it. It's going to be, maybe it's a building there. We don't know what's going to be there." But I just don't feel comfortable sending that to city council unless I know what I'm sending to city council.
We'd be happy to do that. It's going to be very difficult because this site is so small to come up with something that's real. And I wouldn't want to mislead anybody by saying this is what it's going to be, when it's going to be, it's likely going to be different than what, you know, before we get through the site plan process. But if... I'm happy to do that, and we can defer it for 30 days if you want. But if it's not going to be proffered, I'm not sure the point.
I don't have a problem with this. It's a road that's been closed for quite some time, and he said he's sliding the building over. I don't...
And there's no reason for these...
I don't have a problem with this.
I mean, the easements are... I didn't mean to interrupt, but there are, there's no reason for these easements anyway. They're old and not being used, and we certainly will work with the utilities department.
And I agree with Mrs. Oliver. I mean, yes, the building's, it's been there for, since, before I was in high school, it's been there. That median's been there. So, I have no problem with that. But I mean, what do y'all think? Let me leave it. If y'all want to move forward, I won't stop it.
Well, one thing, how many of you own the property?
Five to seven years, something like that.
But you purchased it knowing that there was that easement on the property?
I can't recall, honestly. We, you know, it was a scrap piece of property. We bought it from Mr. Mistraco, who obviously owned a lot of property around there. But yeah, I'm sure we did know there was an easement there.
And that's, so your intent is developed with some kind of a commercial, small, you know, business, you know, on the property. Parking would be achieved on parking. Access?
All that, yes, sir. It'll all be through the site plan approval. No short-term rental, I promise you that. But no, it would be all through, it would be all through the site plan process as far as the parking and the layout and the utilities and all that.
Thank you. So, just so I'm clear, the idea here is to... Th- thank you. So just so I'm clear, the, the idea here is to, to basically clean the site up as far as these easements and then to go out and find a doctor or dentist or some sort of professional user, then do a build-to-suit?
Or, or sell the property.
Or scrape the building or, or sell the property? Okay.
Yes, sir. We would, um, once we get this cleaned up, we can move forward on a conceptual site plan and, and, uh, try to find a user.
Okay. All right.
Any more questions? Any other questions? Okay.
Is there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, is anything on the building right, I mean, on the property right now?
Um, no, sir. There's, um, well, there you go. There's.
Grass.
Yeah. Just grass and a tree. I don't think that the picture on the left is actually, I think that's just off of the property. I could be wrong on that, but it's just basically a grass field.
I probably will support. I, I think that we can trust staff to make sure what gets built there conforms to the, uh, regulations.
And I found that we can also, but it's just being consistent in what we've done in the last eight years I've been doing this. But if y'all feel like we're comfortable with it, I'll be comfortable with it. Jack, do you have something to add?
Um, the, what utilities do you run under, you know, through that easement?
I can't answer that with certainty. I think, um, I believe that there is a, I, I can't answer that with certainty. I'm not sure what it is. I know there's a, I think there's a, um, I think there's a water line. I don't think there's sewer. The sewer is down, down the street. I'm not exactly sure what's under there.
Mr. Morrison, can you, Felsen? Do you, um, do you have any understanding on the, uh, on the utilities?
Cause I know Dominion's overhead there, so I know it's not bad.
Give us one second. I'm sorry.
There's a water line and a sewer line as well, but it's no longer in service.
Uh, the sewer's no longer in service? Then what about the water line?
Water line.
What size is that water line?
Twelve inches.
Twelve inches? Okay.
There's a condition to relocate, so we'd have to relocate.
So we'd have to move it. Like a, okay. What is, I, I don't think that paved area is in the, it is a little misleading that paved area is, is not part of this application. I think it's, it's all grassed turf areas, the, uh, within the easement. They closed, so what is, you know, I'm just curious what the green, the green box, that's closed portion of South Lynn Haven Road, which is the paved area. And is it, is that still public right-of-way? Or is that owned by, who owns the, the green area?
The green, the, the green area is owned by the same person as parcel A, Woodard Realty. So when it was closed, that half was given, was, not given, was, um, apportioned to Woodard Realty and the other half was apportioned to the applicant's parcel at the time. And, um,
And they closed it, but they maintained the easement because of those utilities probably on there?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah. All right. Any more questions? Nope. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We have no more speakers?
No speakers.
No speakers. Um, open it for discussion or a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
To approve it.
Motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Seconds.
Motion for approval by Mrs. Oliver, second by Mr. Costin. We have a, Mr. Redmond hand up.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, to clarify, I am abstaining from this application. The, one of Mr. Wood's partners is a colleague, a work colleague of mine who I am partners with on other projects. I'm, I don't have anything to do with this, but, um, it's probably best that I abstain from this. And in fact, abstain from the shortcoming, the, 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 the shortly-to-be-considered short-term rental applications which are on there.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, I know, but I'm gonna leave is my point.
We're not there yet. All right, we're ready to vote.
Okay. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond? Oh, is abstaining. Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of seven in favor, zero against, with one abstention, agenda item number eight has been recommended for approval.
All right. Um, we've on to item 18.
Number 18 is Linda M. Lamb Living Trust, an application for conditional use permit, short-term rental on property located at 4615 Ocean View Avenue in the Bayside District. Chairman, the applicant is virtual.
Okay.
Mr. Lamb, please state your name and then begin your comments after two to three seconds.
Good afternoon. I'm John Lamb. And, uh, I am representing my wife Linda and I, John Lamb, who have purchased the home at the 4615 Ocean View Avenue area. Um, we have come from Michigan. Um, I'm, uh, have my first grandson, who is 14 weeks old, and our plan is to be, use this site as a site that we can live in when we're in Virginia Beach. We estimate we'll be here as babysitters for, uh, for Barrett Lamb, um, probably about eighty, 75 to 80% of the time, uh, when we're in the state of Virginia. And, uh, we would like to use the other time to allow us to rent that out on a short-term rental basis, uh, when we're not physically here, uh, in the, uh, Virginia Beach area. Um, I do have a son that lives about 10 minutes from me. Um, and he works, uh, here locally, uh, in Virginia Beach. And I have a daughter-in-law who is in the school system or at Princess Anne, teaches first grade. Uh, one of the reasons we're here is because of the COVID activity, uh, for this young, young boy. And we wanted to babysit him rather than put him in daycare. So we have purchased the home as our, our home here in Virginia Beach, where we'll reside and, uh, have him, uh, physically on-site while we're babysitting. And I'd like to answer any other questions that you have, uh, for us. We're relatively new to Virginia Beach and we're relatively new to this process.
Yes, sir. Any questions for Mr. Lamb? No questions? Thank you. All right.
We have four speakers, one in-person and three virtual.
Okay.
Calling Daniel Blevins.
Welcome, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Daniel Blevins, uh, 4622 Lauderdale Avenue, uh, Virginia Beach, Chicks Beach area. Um, I'm in opposition for this, to this application because, um, of a recent incident that occurred on February 28th, uh, regarding short-term rentals. I asked that a police, um, report be handed out. I don't know if you've seen it or y'all got it, uh, to, uh, members of the, uh, planning commission. Um, the morning of the 28th, about five o'clock in the morning, I hear these gunshots. It's about 20 of them. Boom, boom, boom. At first, firecrackers at first. Come to find out, there was a party down the street at a short-term rental across the street from Buies. And there's about 20 shots fired and cars were shot up. Um, it's very unnerving, honestly. Um, we've had more and more applications being filed for short-term rentals. In fact, there's two more applications for consideration in June. Um, and it pretty much renders the, um, Neighborhood Watch program, um, useless. You don't, you don't know who's coming and going. You see strange cars coming. Used to be, I live on a dead-end street and you would know the cars that were coming and going. That's, that's not the case anymore. You don't know who they are. You don't know who's in the neighborhood, people walking around, strangers. Um, and it's just not compatible with the neighborhood, with the residential neighborhood, uh, short-term rentals are. But when it gets to the point where the, the short-term rentals are used as party houses, um, where they're advertised as party houses, as is, is in one case I know about, um, and people come and in violation of the terms of the short-term rental, um, conditional use permit, and, uh, pack a house and they're creating a lot of ruckus, um, to the point where they're shooting guns at, uh, in the neighborhood. Um, it, 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 we need to stand back and, and hold off on any more approvals until, until more, uh, tools are in place for the police department and citizens to use to, to try to, uh, control the, uh, the activity. Uh, for instance, um, item number four of the conditional uses.
Sir, thank you very much for your comments.
Okay.
Next speaker, please. Or do you have, anybody have any questions? Questions?
I wouldn't mind. I wouldn't.
Sir?
Excuse me. I wouldn't mind just hearing the rest of.
Sure. You'd like to.
Good.
My, my questions had to do with several, uh, of the conditional use, um, uh, conditions and how they're enforced. Uh, one of those is number four. I think it says that, uh, no more than, uh, two per people per, let me read it. I'm sorry. Um, It says, "No events associated with a short, short-term rental will be permitted with more than the allowed number of people who may stay overnight, uh, number of bedrooms times two on the property where the short-term rental is located. The short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit." How is that, can that possibly be enforced? That's, that's one question. I don't expect an answer, 'cause I don't, I don't think there is an answer. But hopefully there is.
Well, I, I will answer that. They can enforce the, the special events, but.
Right. But how do you enforce the number of people? And that, that's the problem.
Yes, sir.
When somebody's throwing a party, somebody puts out some type of a text to everybody in the world and, and the next thing you know, they got 100 people there, uh, party, it, it's totally in violation of it. Okay, the next question is, uh, where do, uh, it was item number five. I think there's, there, you know, the person who has the permit has to be able to, um, provide contact information and respond to, to emergencies in 30 minutes. So where do local residents obtain emergency contact information required by condition five? I mean, is that available to, so that, say there's something going on, you know, how do you contact the person who needs to be contacted if, 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 you know, chaos is breaking out? The next question is.
Um, I hate to interrupt you, but just because you're throwing these out here. So my question is, how long have you, how long have you lived in Chicks Beach?
Since, uh, 2008.
Okay. And so with that, and, and so I'm just wanna piggyback on this question that you have as far as enforcement and contacting. What do you, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just asking, so if you have a problem with a short-term rental, what is it that you know that you, what would you do? If there's a party, what would you do? Who do you call?
I, obviously.
Who would you call?
The first, the first, uh, I would first call the police, okay? That would be the first, the first, uh, thing to do. Unfortunately, um, sometimes the police can't get there on time. I mean, I mean, just for instance, since the city started advertising Chicks Beach as a destination, um, we've been inundated with the number of people that are coming down there to use the, use the beach, where there's no parking, there's no facilities or anything else. And, um, you call the police and they're overwhelmed, they're swamped, they can't enforce the parking. You got streets that are 16 feet wide, you got, you got people parking on both sides, you got people parking on the sidewalks, you got people leaving their trash everywhere, you got, all these things, uh, have been, have been thrown upon us in the, since 2000, well, since I've lived there since 2008. It used to be really quiet, nobody knew about, really knew about it and, and people didn't come. But since, I guess, the shootings down at the oceanfront, people, I don't wanna go near there, so let me go to, go somewhere else. So Chicks Beach is one of the places to go on. I'm sure I go on Stan Bridge also. So, um, the, the last two questions I had in terms of mechanism.
Well, do, are you aware of the number of 311? Obviously not.
311?
Mm-hmm.
No.
So, okay, that's, that's all, that's great. Thank you. And you, that's just a point I have with the lack of awareness of the neighborhoods, understanding the process. And, and that's, that's great. Um, you answered the question.
Okay, well, good.
311, let me tell you, 311 is a number set up by the city of Virginia Beach. If you have a problem or, or anything from, from, I called it yesterday for a sewer backing up in my front yard. The, the Public Works came out in 30 minutes. If you have an, if you have an issue, an issue with a party at a short-term rental, you call 311. It'll go to a dispatch and then they'll send it to most likely the police or non-emergency police.
So even at middle of the night, they'll.
Sure, sure. 24/7.
That's good to know. I'll remember that.
Yes, sir.
I haven't, I haven't really had any issues per se for, for short, short-term rentals, um, up until the shooting, okay? Up until the shooting that happened on February 28th. And then I started paying attention to it. Then I started noticing the number of people that were making applications. And then, and, and the fact, and we've talked to other people and say, yeah, that one over there, that's, they advertise that one as a party house. None of which is, is in compliance with, with what I read as a condition, the conditional use permit. The next, two more things real quick. Compliance, what is the enforcement, uh, rec, mechanism for, um, for item 14, which it talks about noise, um, after 10:00 PM and 10:00, police will not enforce the noise ordinance. They won't. The judge throws it out. They, I mean, they gotta have some type of decimeter or something that's gonna measure amount of noise. They won't enforce it, period. They will not. Next thing is finally is, um, um, the maximum numbers, number of persons on the property after 11 and before 7, overnight lodgers shall not, shall be two individuals per bedroom. How is that enforced? How can you enforce that? There's no parking out there. I noticed that this house has, that, that none of the parking spaces are on the property, property, okay? It says it was built in 77. I'm thinking it is back in, uh, in 1977. Was there no on-site parking requirements for residential residences? I think it probably was, but all these parking spaces here are off-site. They are, they are on city right-of-way, okay? That's one thing. The next thing is, if it is off-site, was there ever a conditional use permit that allowed for off-site parking, which I know that's a requirement, uh, with the, you want off-site parking. In this case, that, that's what we have. So there's a lot of problems. There's no sidewalks in Chicks Beach. There's no trash facilities in Chicks Beach. There's no restroom facilities in Chicks Beach. There's, there's nothing and people are coming down there in droves and littering up and trashing up the place. We have people stopping across the street. We live on Lauderdale. We have a lake across the street. There's trees there. People go out and relieve themselves in public, okay? Uh, and it's just, it's just, it's just, it's just too much. And the short-term rentals just adds to that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Okay, the, these are all virtual speakers. I'm gonna call Chuck Walton and after that, Senator Line Gingrich. Mr. Walton, if you would wait two to three seconds and state your name and begin your comments.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, my name is Charles Walton. I reside at 4619A Ocean View Avenue. While I appreciate the fact that this gentleman is new to the community, I am not. I've lived here close to five years now. Um, what I'm concerned about are two things. Number one, um, you know, when I purchased my home, I noticed that there was, uh, you know, a regentrification of the area. We have some beautiful homes that are high six figures, low seven figures in the area, of which these residents pay tens of thousands of dollars in city taxes, um, annually. And my concern is, what will happen to the neighborhood? So I asked the commissioners, is this a benefit to the current residents of the neighborhood? I don't see it that way. I see it as, um, a revenue generator for not only the property owner and a potential revenue generator for the city of Virginia Beach. But I think the quality of life will decline. Um, Mr. Blevins did a very nice job, talked into that some of the current issues that we're experiencing, the over. the overcrowding, the street traffic, people wandering around at all hours of the day and night. I can tell you that I've had people climb over my fence in the middle of the night. And this is a big concern to me. Particularly as someone who works from home, has to get up early, work long hours. What I'm concerned about is in the summertime, these renters will have no consideration for the residents. They will be there to party. That is a fact. As a matter of fact, I owned a rental property and the way that I managed the rental property in a beach town was we had a family member that lived in town and that family member literally was at the house once the renters left to make sure that nothing was damaged or destroyed. I'm concerned while this particular property owner says that he's got people that are local, he will not be local. And if something happens on the property, who's responsible? So at the end of the day, we're talking about the residents, their quality of life and the behavior of these renters that we've seen over time. And that to me is a great concern. And I know that I speak for other residents in the area. This is the problem, commissioners. And if we let this happen here, this will just be the tip of the iceberg, I'm afraid. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Caroline Gingrich, followed by Brian Camden. Ms. Gingrich, if you would wait two to three seconds and then state your name and please begin your comments.
Hi, my name is Caroline Gingrich. I reside at 4614 Ocean View Avenue, which is directly across the street from the Lamb property. My residence is very vulnerable to this property in question and that's why I feel like it's imperative to have people there with a vested interest in our neighborhood safety and well-built, well-being of others. In other words, a neighbor, not a hotel guest there, to have a good time with no regard for others. They're paying to do what they want and not follow the rules of a neighborhood. They are staying there in lieu of a hotel. And Mr. Lamb has stated that his son has a young baby. I have a daughter with young children and I can't imagine that her husband would leave in the middle of the night, leave his family to go to handle a situation at this house if anybody could even get in touch with him. I mean, we don't even know if that situation would, you know, be able to hap, you know, happen. And Mr. Blevins and Chuck have covered all of, all of the other issues. I could go on and on about the shooting, which was a disaster. I mean, the amount of police that had to come and handle that situation, it, it was just unbelievable. I mean, they had our streets closed for, obviously for good reason. And the bullets, you know, they hit cars in a house. It's only by the grace of God that nobody was killed, nobody was injured. It definitely rocked our world, that's for sure. The parking situation, my understanding is that the Lambs don't even have parking at their house, that they would have to literally take the fence down and park on the lawn. And I know the city is supposed to be doing some utility work on that side of the street. That is, they can utilize that parking. That is the city, that's city property. The former owners constantly called the police because that is a place where people would just park and block their cars in. You know, you're not allowed to put a cone up because it's not your property. It's city property. So there's no way to prevent people from parking there. That is just, it is city property. And I don't understand too, who's going to enforce the people that are staying there? Are they, do they know to take out their trash on Wednesdays? They're not part of the neighborhood. They are hotel guests. And I've lived in the neighborhood since 2010. We built our home and have lived there four years. Never thought this was going to be an issue because we had looked at the regulations. Now, of course, I know things change, you know, on, not on a daily basis. But we knew there was no parking available and the short-term rental thing was not a big deal. What's becoming a big deal? And somebody already bought the other side of this duplex and they have stated that if Mr. Lamb is successful, they are also going to do it. So what are we going to turn our neighborhood into? I mean, I, it's just, it's so disheartening that it's, I don't even know what else to say except that.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is Brian Camden, to be followed by Joseph Ozennay. Mr. Camden, if you would wait two to three seconds and please state your name and begin your comments.
Yes, this is Brian Camden. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. I reside at 4609 Ocean View Avenue. I am the house directly next door. I am a 30-year resident of Chesapeake Beach. I'm a member of the Civic League. I am also the block captain for the Neighborhood Watch for this section of Ocean View Avenue. We are in protest of this application. We'd advise Mr. Lamb when he first came up with it that the neighbors would probably be all in opposition to it. The main objection I have is that it is non-compatible with the residential use of the surrounding properties. We are all owner-occupied units. The houses to both sides, the houses across the street, the houses behind them are all in opposition to this. My son's a freshman at Cox High School. What we, the problem that I've run into over the last five years as the Neighborhood Watch is mainly these short-term rentals, the people is noise complaints, noise, trash, but mainly noises. They like to be outside on the decks at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. The neighbors complain. The police really will not enforce that. But the people have to get up in the morning, go to work every day. This severely impacts their ability to have quiet, peaceful enjoyment of their house there. There are no short-term rentals around us right now. The closest one we'll have is down at the end of Ocean View Avenue, over right next to the, the Bridge Tunnel Trestle there. I agree with what they were, the previous speakers have said about the no parking, the trash. The gun battle was certainly a major disturbance here. It got everybody really upset about this. But I bring the commission members back to the fact that this application is not compatible with the residential use of all of the surrounding properties. It's my understanding our Civic League is voted against being a part of the short-term rental overlay district. Chesapeake Beach is not in it and, and for good reason, we oppose it. The property in question has been owner-occupied for a number of years. And as the previous speakers mentioned, the ability of people to come in here, buy it.
Comments? Next speaker, please.
Our final speaker is Joseph Ozennay. If you would wait two to three seconds, please state your name and begin your comments.
Hello, my name is Joe Ozenn. It's A-U-Z-E-N-N-E. I'm at 4622 Ocean View Avenue, across the street from the subject property. And I'd like to bring up just a few items. On October 21st, 2020, there was a request by Vice Mayor Wood and Council members Jones and Tower for the establishment of these short-term rental overlay districts. And then on November 4th, 2020, City Council asked the Planning Commission to apply for the overlay districts. City Council is, Council's current proposal states that if a property is outside of an overlay district, it will not function as a short-term rental property, as Mr. Camden mentioned. And it also goes on to state, in other areas of the city, short-term rentals are not compatible with the residential use of the surrounding properties and are often the cause of excessive noise, illegal or improper parking, traffic violations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I must say that, I mean, a little disagreement with, with Mr. Camden on the number of short-term rentals. Based on the summary that I read approving, tentatively approving this property, there are 22 short-term rentals within a 4x4 block radius of our properties. There's another four short-term rentals under consideration for approval. There are actually 14 of the 22 or four blocks are within four blocks of us, actually three blocks of us. In the summer report, it also states that, on page three, it states that it has zero parking spaces. That's not in compliance. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the safety considerations have already been addressed. The other thing I have to address is this COVID-19 situation that we're in. What requirements have the city put on these short-term rental, rentals to determine whether or not the people that are coming and flooding into these rentals are not infected? What are the owners doing? What are the owners doing for cleanup after they leave? Or are they just letting them roam around the beach having a good time? And then lastly, I'd like to say, and I'd like to quote Ms. D. Oliver after the shooting at 56th Street and 58th Street off Holly Road. She said, suggested that there may be some issues with allowing more properties to be used as business ventures. And I quote, "All of a sudden, it has become a right, or it appears that one person after another is buying property in a residential neighborhood to conduct a business. And I'm not sure that is exactly what we were intending for our city to go," unquote. So I thank you for your time. Everything else has been covered by our neighbors and hopefully you will disapprove this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That was our final speaker.
Okay. Mr. Lamb, are you still there? Would you like to make any comments?
Yes, I, I understand the consideration with the shooting. We happened to be in the area when that happened, so I, I understand the impact to the area and I understand that is also the first shooting that has occurred in that area ever. So I understand that, I understand that area. I, I can guarantee you that this property will be taken care of and will be in good repair. Excuse me. And will take care of as best I can. Sorry, I got a dog here. And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to hear that my neighbors are in such vehement disagreement with my being able to be here for 80% of the time, 75 to 80% of the time, and then doing a short-term rental for the 25% of the time that I'm not available here. So, but I can guarantee you that I will do the very best I can to honor all that I've signed up for in terms of the CUP and also for the short-term rental activities that I've agreed to.
All right, sir. Thank you for your comments. No more, no more speakers?
No more speakers.
All right, we'll open it up for us to talk about, I guess.
So I appreciate what the applicant is trying to do. I moved down to this area because my mom was here. It was right after I had my son and I, I needed that extra support. And so I can imagine that, that his son is thrilled that his parents are, want to come and, and help with the baby. Congratulations. At the same time, it sounds like this neighborhood is saturated. And while I believe that the applicant would be a great homeowner and make sure that the property is taken care of, you, even when you vet the people that come into your home, you can't guarantee what they're going to do. And so while I, I certainly applaud their efforts, he is a victim of the wrongs of, of the people before him, it sounds like.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for staff and I'm, I'm just, just asking a question. Do we actually know that this, from the shooting, was a, an illegal short-term rental or illegal rental property? Or was it a legal property rental? Where, do we know that?
Yes, sir. We were notified immediately, once we were aware of the issue. That property was not a legal short-term rental, so it was cited appropriately, so.
Okay. I just wanted to ask a question. Nobody ever relaxed, she said that. Just a question. Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Costin.
I'd like to say to Mr. Blevins that unfortunately, a lot of the responsibility is being placed upon the neighbors to, to figure out what to do. Now, Ms. Oliver gave you the number 311. That number is actually 385-3111, okay? And it's going to be where the city gathers information to let a short-term rental exist or not exist. It's based on, say if you, you see 20 people there that's starting to be a party, you can call 311 and say, this is what's going on. And the, the proper authorities will assist you in making that complaint known to the City Council so that when that property comes up for review, it either gets denied or re-approved based on what has happened in the past. So that's kind of where we have to go from, what do we do when we see something going on at a short-term rental? They also have to have their number posted on the building, so that gives you some more information to find out how to reach out to the person who owns it and operates it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wall?
I think the Lambs are very upstanding individuals and very sincere in their plan to operate their short-term rental. But it's, it's tough for me to make a decision against, you know, some of the opposition that, that has, you know, come forward, you know, to the short-term rental in that area.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Alcaraz.
I think it was in the fall of 2020 that we really heard numerous people come forward in opposition, civic leagues and all that. And I think I heard, I heard it loud and clear and I'm hearing it loud and clear today. So I'm just letting you know, I won't be supporting it.
Okay. Who else? Mr. Graham?
Based on what I've heard today, I, I will not be supporting it.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Somebody's got two. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we deny. We recommend denial of this application.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion for denial by Mr. Graham and a second by Mr. Alcaraz.
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond is absent. Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of seven in favor and zero against, application number 18 has been recommended for denial.
All right. On to item 21.
Yes, sir. Our last agenda item for today. Suzanne Olesko, an application for conditional use permit, short-term rental on property located at 312 Arctic Crescent in the Beach District.
Welcome, ma'am. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Olesko at 312 Arctic Crescent. I've been a Virginia Beach resident all my life. I was born on Arctic Avenue. I attended Star of the Sea Elementary School for seven years, First Colonial, and now currently I'm a UDU professor. My passion is Virginia Beach and I don't know if any of my pictures got in here, but growing up, one of my favorite activities was going to the Virginia Beach Dome on 19th Street. Always loved that building, always loved the concerts, always loved the acoustics. This home became available. My father passed away and left me a little money and I decided to buy this home because I love it, because it's a piece of architecture that's not common in our area, especially common on Arctic Crescent. It has quite a bit of land on the right and on the left. I have a school across the street that I attended. I have Father Steve next door, who has come and blessed the home. I have a family to the other side that is a multi-use building. When I purchased it, I didn't really, well, when I was looking at it, I really didn't understand what the cup was. I have been an investor of real estate in Virginia Beach homes for, since the 90s, probably flipped maybe 100 homes before it ever was a TV show. My husband is very handy and we love doing that. I love decorating, he loves doing things. So this home is very unique. When I looked at it, I asked the realtors and I asked other people if there was a Civic League. if there was a civic league, if there were any restrictions in this community. And the answer was no. To the left of me is a residential property, which is the church. I talked to Father Steve. He was, he thought it was a great idea to have something like this. I would work in conjunction with the church for their youth retreats, for bridal parties, things like that. To the other side of me was a family that also thought it was an okay idea. The home is very, very unique. It's a great addition to the Vibe section. It's a piece of art, as I see it. You know, it has a lot of history for our community. I live just a few minutes down the street. I will be extremely involved. I already have another short-term rental at the Ocean's Two condos that has great reviews. I've never had trouble over there with anything I've done. I've paid the taxes. I've been legal the whole time. I want to make this legal. I want to go take it to a very classy step of having Atkinson Real Estate manage it as a beach rental so it wouldn't be the typical Airbnb party center. It is a small home with a big heart. It's a Zen home. It was designed and built for peace and tranquility. It was built by Mr. Revlon, who came from New York City after he took Revlon public. And he was a part of the Edgar Cayce community. I don't know what else to say about it, but it is a perfect place for guests to come to be impressed with our city. It is, as you know, walking to the beach to the boardwalk. It's only eight residences away from the bed and breakfast, where they rent by the room by the night for what I would rent the whole entire home for. It, I will be there a lot. I have been there a lot. The neighbors know that I'm there a lot. There will be no parties there. There will be no smoking of cigarettes or anything else there. I will install a Kivo lock system. So if there is a party and there are people, I can lock them out. I will not have nonsense there. The home is beautifully decorated with a bike theme. I would invite anybody to come. I've invited some people on the board to come. I would like to name it Pedaling Around because it's a roundhouse and I have a bike theme. It's gorgeous. It's fun. I have a lot of privacy. I have the church on the right, the school on the left. It is not a typical home in the neighborhood. It doesn't look like any of the homes. It has twice the property of any home in the neighborhood. Every day, we have the bus line for the children lined up in the circle. So it is not very private. We have a circle at the end of the cul-de-sac that is a parking lot for beachgoers during the day, every day of the year, including surfers in the off-season. As you can see, there's a lot of open land there. I don't know what else to say, but in my mind, at night, it's not a quiet street. I hear the whipping around of the Ferris wheel and the big swing. And I see the lights and the neighbors that are here. They can walk to the end of their driveway and see it as well. So it is not quiet. There are a lot of people coming up and down the street, off the beach, walking down the sidewalk. I happen to love it. I love the sound of children. I'm a professor of early childhood education. I love the sound of the playground every day. I love the car line pickup. I've become friends with the people who come to pick up their children. Many of them have toured the home since I've had the yellow, the orange sign in front. They've come in from the bus line. They wanted to see the house. They've always wanted to see it. It's extremely unusual. And I think it would be a great addition to our Vibe section, which is two blocks down the street. I've walked there many a times, and I've patronized many of the restaurants since then. I've been on the tour of the Vibe twice since I've had this home there because I just think it's wonderful. And I really appreciate you considering it in where it's located. Any other questions?
Yes, Ms. Alcaraz.
Ms. Olesko, I know we've talked.
Yes.
You said something. I have been receiving opposition. Just want you to know that. I don't know if it was noted during the informal. Was there any?
Opposition to speak.
I did receive calls. One thing you just said, are you offering to restrict it just for the church use? You said that?
No, no, no. I want to include that. I want to include, yeah, I would include, and I would welcome people from the church. I happen to be Catholic, and I happen to grow up in that church. And I would include it and be a part of the church community because basically, my property line is right next to the church property.
I understand that.
Yes.
Where I'm going with this, I'm not really in support of it. But when you told me something about maybe working with the church or something, that's, hear me out. That's where I was kind of leaning towards you.
Yeah.
But if it's not just?
Not completely one-hundred percent, but I definitely would offer as much as I could to the church because I believe in that.
And I understand that. It's just what I'm hearing from the neighbors and.
I don't.
Let me finish. Let me finish. What I'm hearing from the neighbors with the street coming into a cul-de-sac and a turnaround, going by with whatever maximum you can have, I think it's four.
Four.
At once a week, the neighbors, they're swaying me their side, so.
Well, I only have two neighbors. Two immediate neighbors.
I'm talking about the neighbors on the street, though.
Okay, there are eight homes on the street.
Correct.
One of them is a bed and breakfast that has five rooms that they rent out. And the other homes that are on that particular street, none of them look like my home. And none of them have the land that I have. They have taken a lot the size of mine and put three homes on it. And the homes that come before my home on the cul-de-sac, if you look straight down Fifteenth Street, there is a big Section Eight apartment building that's actually vacant now that they have, that they look at. And there is also, if you look straight down, you can see the amusement park and all kind of stuff down Fifteenth Street. So my little section that none of the neighbors pass by, unless they're coming down the circle, is much more private than where they already live.
I understand that. I was bringing it up for the additional traffic that would be coming in past their house to get to your short-term rental. That's the concern that they had.
There's already about fifty cars that come twice a day to do the pickup line for Star of the Sea School. And then there's probably at least another twenty that come by a day to park there to go to the beach, any given day. So it's not like someone with four people would bring any more traffic than, I mean, it is, I've sent pictures in of the pickup line from Star of the Sea that's there twice a day. You couldn't get another car down that street.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One quick question. You said there was a multi-use building next door. What is that?
Yeah, it's a home, and they have, it's a, I guess it's maybe approved for duplexes, a duplex next door. And originally, that home was the first home, and the person who developed this particular dome subdivided the lot. So there's a family in there that has a rental, maybe two. And they have totally been in support of me having it. They're the only, that's the only house that faces my property. And they're totally in favor of what I'm doing. And I have a letter of support from them.
Okay. Chad, Mr. Wall?
Did you say how long you've owned the property?
I actually have only owned the property for about three or four months. And I bought this as an investment property, to be honest with you. But I also own quite a few other investment properties that are Section Eight properties in Virginia Beach. And I've owned, I own quite a few different properties.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
We have three speakers.
Okay.
Paige Miares, followed by Haiko Pincawa, and then Albert Gander. Paige Miares?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Thanks for letting us speak on this issue. I want to just be brief because I know that you guys have to hear these all day long. And I just thank you for your time. I'm here to represent that Atkinson Realty would be professionally managing the property and to show you in person here that that is our intent. You're probably familiar, you've probably heard me say it before, of all of the different services that we provide as guardrails and protection for our short-term rentals. We have a staff, a full-time staff of four that are on call twenty-four-seven during the summer. They're responding to calls whenever needed. But usually, those calls are for that, you know, the wireless isn't working, the remote for the TV, they can't figure out. Those are the kind of calls we get, not issues that you've heard from other applicants. We have an onsite maintenance person to help with any issues of that sort. And we also do extra trash pickup. So we have a Saturday trash pickup, a private company that is paid for, not on the dime of the city, to ensure that the homes that we operate are pristine. There are three reasons, really, that this property really fits and should be approved and that we are here today asking for your approval. One is that it is exactly where the location is. And it really is in that resort vibe. Like Mrs. Olesko said, you hear the Ferris wheel and the activity from Pacific Avenue. Pacific Avenue is literally, you can literally see Pacific Avenue from the property and all of the activity going on there in the tourist, in the tourist area. The other thing is that it's just a unique home, which Mrs. Olesko alluded to as well. It's very difficult to see a family living in this home with no walls, really, full-time. So that would be another reason that this really fits into that kind of unique, unique experience. The home is only approved for four adults. But honestly, most likely, it would be two adults and, you know, two children there for the week. And then the third reason is really, you witnessed it here. Mrs. Olesko is just an outstanding citizen of Virginia Beach. She cares about our city, and she wants to contribute to it in a manner that's positive and helpful to the resort district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Haiko Pincawa, and then Albert Gander.
Welcome, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Haiko Pincawa. I live at 328 Arctic Crescent. It's two houses down from the property here. I've lived there since 2012. The neighborhood is owned, and people who own them live in the neighborhood. There's, the multipurpose location is like also long-term rental, and we know those neighbors as well. Direct neighbors left and right, I know they have affiliation with the church, and I think that should not play into this here, but I think those ropes are pulled here. I'm very concerned about the most recent development of violence coming from single groups and living in scattered areas of the district here in short-term rentals. And I'm just like, my wife is afraid. She, we're talking about like moving and selling because it's just like that contributes to that. I know the police is understaffed, and I'm all for the police. And they should be patrolling more Pacific and Atlantic where those tourists and visitors belong. And they don't belong in neighborhoods like this. And therefore, I'm against it, and I cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker, Albert Gander.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
It's Albert Gander. I'm also a resident of Arctic Avenue. I live at 1500. Although I can appreciate some of the things that were said earlier about the management of the property. We moved there because we belong to Star of the Sea Church. My children do go to school there. We chose this neighborhood specifically because it's the last of a neighborhood feel before you're actually in a resort district. I believe when you look at an overlay map for what the resort area is, it goes down Fifteenth Street. It stays to the north of Fifteenth. And then to the east, it goes down to Sixteenth Street. The bed and breakfast that was mentioned before, to cite that there was uses for that type of property, actually has a Sixteenth Street address, which is inside of the area allowed for that type of use. I understand that she is also an investor of other properties. And I feel like if you're investing to make money, that you should do it within the constraints that are already existing, not just because you have the money to come in and infiltrate my neighborhood and erode the neighborhood feel that already exists there. As to the cars that are on that street there for the pickup that happened twice a day, Dr. Avril, who is the principal of that, has spoke to all of us and told us about the cars being there. That was for COVID and COVID-only. Before that, the pickup happened in the front. They had to do that to help separate the age groups for the kids. So there is some pickup in the front. That is not historically the way it's been. It has been that way now. I know that Father Steve blessed the house. I think that that's fine. I don't think that he has any ill will to anyone else. Like what was said before in earlier arguments against short-term rentals, I believe that it does bring in elements that don't belong in the neighborhood. It also doesn't belong in my neighborhood. There is the church there. As to the Section Eight house that I have to look at that's across the street, that is also owned by an ODU professor. He does not keep it in good working order or repair. Matter of fact, he hasn't had anybody in there renting it since I have lived there. It would be good to go away from the neighborhood. I understand that this property has the intention to be managed correctly and appropriately, but it is not with a neighbor in it. I know every neighbor on the street by name. I knew Lawrence that lived in that house before it was sold because he passed away and died. I know Mike and Daniel that are next to him that have the multi-use structure. I know Haiko and Nadia that are next door. I can go on and on and on down the street, all the way to the owner-operators of the Airbnb. I know them because I'm somebody that's involved in my neighborhood. I can tell you the name of the police officers that walk the beat on my neighborhood. I can even tell you the names of some of the people that are homeless that my church feeds. I know that because I'm there, not because I'm not there.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any questions?
One question.
Sir?
You said, where do you live?
1500 Arctic Avenue. So if you look at that map there, you go straight down the street. That begins Arctic Crescent down there. The, so Fifteenth terminates, the next house over that you can see the one white car in the driveway, that's mine.
The first one?
Yep. So when the pickup line, it begins down there, and I walk my kids directly across the street, straight to that building where they go to school.
All right. Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Hold on. Would you like to come back up? You can make rebuttal.
I just want one more comment. I am very passionate about being there. I've been there probably more than a lot of people who have been home at work. I've been there a lot in the past few months. Again, my property, as you can see, is a much larger property with trees on all the sides. It doesn't interfere with anyone else. The trees, you can't even see, have the leaves on them now. And I do care about it, and I will be a good neighbor. I have a passion for it. I have a passion for the architecture. I have a passion for our city. I have a passion for the Vibe District. I have a passion for the restaurants, for the hotels, for everything that's going on good there. I live minutes away. I will be there a lot. I plan, if I get your approval, I plan on doing a lot of wonderful things with this home. And I really feel like it will be a destination for the city of Virginia Beach, for the Buckminster Fuller lovers, the dome lovers, the architect lovers, the Vibe District. We're looking at a piece of art that is not like any other home in that neighborhood. I'm asking for four people to come for peace and tranquility with the beautiful Lake Holly behind it, the nice oceanfront close by, the beautiful church beside it, the bells of the church and the birds singing and all the good things that there are on this street, and the wonderful neighbors who are up and down the street, who are outside. It's an amazing place. And I think it's a great place for us to share with visitors that come to our city to see our resort, to enjoy the area. And I promise, promise that it will not be a shoot-up, killin' place. It will be a place for peace and tranquility. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Questions? All right. Going to close this and open it up. Mr. Alcaraz? Beach District?
Anybody else?
The Beach District, you're the man.
Well, I mean, I appreciate her love for what she wants to do. I'm just torn because, again, and I appreciate, I know she's going to, you know, that, and get in there and make sure that whoever... know, that, and get in there and make sure that whoever rents that once a week of the four people, that she'll do her best to make sure, but that's the concern I have with the neighbors. When something happens, it's happened, and then the neighbors have to deal with it. And then again, it happens, and I understand that you'll get the good, the good visitors there, but then we're just, I'm just not in support of a lot of these STRs and what, and management is the most important thing, but what concerns me, when it happens, then I feel like we've let the neighbors down. So I'm not supporting it, but I'd like to hear your concerns.
George, on this one, I did get several calls, and my, and the concern was, and I'm sure she would be a great short-term rental owner, the concern here is that these CUPs run with the land. She mentioned several times how she likes to flip houses, so that concerns me, is the, you know, when this house gets sold, now we've got an STR in the middle of an established neighborhood. And the proximity, yeah, it's one block away from Pacific Avenue, but it is an established neighborhood, like that gentleman said and the other gentleman said. And I'm just, I'm just not willing to impart that on the neighborhood. Just, you know, there's a school and children, and it's a dead end, and I just, unfortunately, and I, and the word destination was used, and that made me uncomfortable. I don't think that people want a destination in their neighborhood at this point.
Who else? Mr. Costin? No?
I'd like to support her. I think she'd be great at it. I'm a believer in giving people a fair chance when you can, and I try not to judge people by what other people have done and the way other people have run stuff. So I'm kind of twisted in between right now, is what I am.
Anybody else? Jack?
Yeah, I think she did a great job, and I think that, you know, her management, you know, Atkinson Realty does a great job, but the opposition is fairly, fairly strong, you know, and I appreciate their input, and I appreciate their inability and interest in, you know, protecting their neighborhoods, so.
Well, I'm torn. In fact, I told Dee yesterday I was going to go by there, and I did go by there yesterday, and it's, I thought it was an RT district. I mean, you can't get any closer to the RT district than this house, literally right next door. But I'm all about being consistent with what we've done in the past, and what we've done in the years in the past, and when we've had opposition, and we've all been consistent about staying with that. So I'm going to not support either.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Again, this is a recommendation that we're making, and of course, City Council has the final say, so I make a recommendation that we disapprove of agenda number 21.
Do you have a second? Need a second? Need a second?
I'll second up.
All right, we have a recommendation for denial by Mr. Alcaraz and a second by Mr. Wall.
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is absent. Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond is absent. Vice Chair Wall?
Aye.
Chairman Weiner?
Aye.
By recorded vote of seven in favor and zero against, agenda item number 21 has been recommended for denial.
All right. Mr. Tahan, do you have anything you need to add?
No, sir. Just as a reminder to the public that the City Council will be taking up the short-term rental regulations in a four-part mini-series, as the city manager jokingly called it this morning, with the 18th being the presentation by myself and Mr. Kemp to explain the recommendation by the Planning Commission. The following week will be a workshop of City Council to go over the regulations, then a public hearing, the following voting meeting, and then the next voting meeting, which is the second meeting in June, would be the actual vote on the proposed regulation. So they are looking for public input. The information is available on the website, vbgov.com/str. Summer's done a great job keeping that up to date, and so all the information, and including any comments, are also located there, so. But other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Any new business, old business? None? We are adjourned.[1756.54]